Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Sign up cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under public comment. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
The purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business, and proper decorum must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and shall refrain from any action that disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meeting or hinders a council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend the proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings with shouting, fail to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted speaking time has expired, as these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meetings, and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply, as cautioned, shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on the agenda item under consideration, and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from the chambers who possesses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's right created by the Constitution, law, ordinance, or regulation.
For the invocation, we're going to have a moment of silence. Please bow your heads. Thank you very much. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. City Attorney, do we have a quorum?
Yes, you do, Mayor.
Thank you very much. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. We have two items of business to discuss this evening. The first is item 4A, which is a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant, 2425 Annual Performance Report, and the 2627 Action Plan Housing End. We'll be hearing requests for funding from nonprofit agencies. And I'll turn it over to Terry Franklin from Neighborhood Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Thank you for being here tonight. We're here to present, as the City Manager said, our performance report for the CDBG program for last fiscal year, 2425, to the public for public comment. We'll also be reviewing our housing and community development initiatives for next year's program, and also hear from nonprofit agencies that have applied to our department for consideration of funding for next year. We do have a presentation for you tonight. Again, just to recap of our annual performance report for the fiscal year that was closed out. Gives you a little bit of background on Neighborhood Services. We oversee the CDBG Home and Ship Grant Programs. These are federal and state grants that provide funding for various activities within the city. The mission of the CDBG program is to provide supportive services and strive to maintain economic stability of neighborhoods. Goals and objectives: We want to ensure the programs are appropriate to community needs. We consider the history, needs, demographics, and economics of the housing stock, and design programs that address needs that relate to neighborhood revitalization, housing preservation, infrastructure improvements, and serving the needs of our residents. I know that is hard to see, isn't it? More of a cheat. So our revitalization objectives, we want to focus on the small and targeted areas so we achieve visible results. And then we also want to address needs in neighborhoods such as housing rehabilitation programs, redevelopment programs, infrastructure improvements, and economic development programs. So focusing on preserving and retaining the existing housing stock, we do that through several measures there. We also have fair housing objectives that we have to comply with for the CDBG program in furthering fair housing. So we address that through education, special needs housing, and availability of affordable housing units. So to serve the needs of the residents, we focus on a range of programs that will serve eligible low-income residents. We create safe, affordable housing units. We improve accessibility. We perform emergency repairs to prevent displacement. And we improve infrastructure and revitalize distressed neighborhoods. The housing objectives portion of the CDBG program is to prevent moderately declining neighborhoods from further deterioration. We want to provide safe and efficient housing within the financial reach of our residents. We want to stimulate broad interest in neighborhood preservation, create opportunities for decent, safe, and accessible housing, and partner with other programs for maximum impact. So then we get into the implementation of the plan. When doing so and designing our annual plan, we want to understand community needs. So we look at the existing housing stock, what's available. We prepare the consolidated plan, that's every five years. We conduct surveys amongst our residents and service providers. And then we also listen to program participants, the residents, and leaders, and concerns, and objectives. We put our goals and objectives in writing to include measurable milestones. We review our goals and objectives periodically to make sure we're on target. We undertake initiatives that are compatible with the mission, and we also reject those that are not. We also plan for change every year. So we want to monitor both met and unmet needs. We secure support for activities and establish priorities, limitations, and opportunities. We meet with residents and stakeholders throughout the year. We also look at market conditions, and we want to target programs to the right market and properties. In doing so, we have to look at resources and constraints of those resources. So we analyze our organizational staffing and availability of consultants and contractors, and we inventory potential partners. So we'll get into a little bit about the CDBG program. Just to recap, these are federal funds. Up to 15% of our annual allocation can be used for public service activities, which are those that we reach out to our service providers that apply for funding. 20% can be utilized for administrative activities. 70% of those funds have to be used for programs that serve low-to-moderate income persons. Funds can be used for a variety of strategies, including housing, economic development, infrastructure, public services, and revitalization activities. So during 2425, which is year three of our five-year plan, our grant allocation last year was $307,980. You see there for prior year funds, that's zero. This is the first year in quite a few years that you're not going to see any prior year funds available, because I'm glad to say that we have allocated all of those funds to projects. So there is none that is not being utilized. Last year, we spent $437,977. Of that amount, $39,700 went to public services, which was slightly under the 15% cap. $336,700 was for neighborhood revitalization strategies. We did some street resurfacing. I think we accomplished four or five city blocks with that, and we started an additional shaded bench stop on DeLeon. And for program administration, you see the expenditures there for that, which was under the 20% cap. So going forward, those dollars that I mentioned that have been all allocated and encumbered, that $335,189 is what we're carrying forward to this year on projects we've already started. And the South Street Target area, those are your highlighted items from the community that we're working on for this year. That includes sidewalk improvements, some lighting improvements, and some transportation improvements. So during 2425, for public services, our sub-receipients spent $39,700, which served 2,805 people for the first time. That does not include reoccurring clients in their programs. That's strictly the first time served. Public facilities and infrastructure, 1,455 people residing in the Target area benefited from the street improvements. And then again, we have our administration accounted for there. That is the portion of our annual report for FY 2425. If there's any comments, or anyone from the public that has any comments on the annual report, we'll accept those at this time before we go into the remainder of the program.
City Clerk, are there any cards on this?
There's no cards.
Members, Stokel?
Yes, just a couple of questions. One, do you feel like, are these funds in jeopardy, given the political climate right now?
We've been trying to stay on top of all the news that's coming out. And you listen to this one, and this one's a... But I do feel they are in jeopardy. I feel like probably next year, we'll see a drastic reduction.
Okay.
And that our home program, which is separate, what we're understanding is that will completely go away next year.
That was my second question I was going to ask about the first-time homebuyer program. Where do those funds come from? Have people been utilizing those? Do we max out and utilize all those funds typically as it stands right now?
Home is one of our programs that is struggling.
Okay.
Our first-time homebuyer program, which is what we use the home funds for mainly right now, because we're utilizing CDBG for these activities. And then our ship program we use for our housing programs. We haven't had a very good participation, but we have served, I think, four first-time homebuyers this last year.
Yeah, I was looking at it actually on the website, and I think what was challenging, if you haven't looked at it, it's really interesting to me, and maybe you have a different viewpoint on it. It was like your income level has to be very low, that it made me look like, okay, you can qualify if you make this, but then I was like, you can't afford the monthly payments, though. So I'm like, okay, how does this work for people? So I'm hoping that, I don't know, again, if somebody, not at our level necessarily, but like state and federal level, like, look at, because that's something that I feel like I really wish we could help, maybe a little partial, but the younger people try to get into homeownership and not be stuck in a perpetual cycle of renting and then not being able to save.
Right.
And I was looking at that program specifically, and I was like, man, I don't know how people can benefit from this program, given the criteria right now.
So we're trying to offset those challenges. If you recall, we just recently donated some city lots to a developer to build homes for first-time homebuyers. So by doing that, it brings down the cost. Plus, we're contributing an extra $25,000 per house for our ship program to get that cost down.
Okay.
And then the buyer can also participate in the first-time homebuyer program, which, depending on the income level, depends on how much subsidy you get. But for a very low household, I think we're up to $75,000 now in subsidies. So if you build a $200,000 house, and you take the land out of the equation, so now it's lower, and then you add that subsidy, I think it is reachable.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for that. Because that's something on my list that I'd like to try to see if we can, potentially with the state or federal level, try to tackle, but it's a big problem. Okay, so yeah, that was the first-time homebuyer program, funds being in jeopardy. Okay, I think that's all I had for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Members Stokel, Member Moscoso.
Thank you. I think I brought this up last time, but it's a little, it's hard to see that so much money goes to resurfacing. And so, do we know how we can? I know that that's kind of, from what you explained last time, that's, we know those are projects that will get approved. But what is the plan moving forward where we can hopefully use that for more housing initiatives? I mean, it was great to see the shade off of DeLeon and things like that, but what is the plan moving forward where we can hopefully get different projects in place, and so it doesn't all go to resurfacing? Because I'd love to use other dollars for that.
Sure. So the plan that we have in meeting with the community, those three things that I listed for this year, the sidewalks, they have a particular sidewalk project they would like to see, some lighting improvements, and then, what was the last thing? Lighting?
Transportation.
Transportation. We talked about some traffic calming features along DeLeon that they have requested. So we're working on those. Into the following year, CDBG can't be used for new construction for housing, so we have to find creative ways to assist the developer with other things like fees.
Can it be used for rehabbing homes?
It can be used for rehabbing, but we use our ship and home program for that. If we use CDBG for that, it would take away from public services and other... Because we only get about $250,000 a year in CDBG.
Okay, thank you.
Member Nelson, did you have anything?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
That concludes all the comments.
All right, so we are going to move on to...
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Your microphone.
Sorry. So we're going to move on to the rest of our presentation here. So we're going to be building for next year's plan. This is year five of the consolidated plan. So this is the final year under that five-year plan that we'll be working with and developing. So these are the consolidated plan strategies that's built into the city's five-year plan. I'll read them. They're a little small up there. So we want to sustain, support, provide, and create suitable and affordable housing opportunities, including housing for special needs and the homeless. We want to provide and support public services such as social, educational, job training, recreational, technological, health, and case management services, which encourage self-sufficiency amongst children, adults, families, elderly, and the homeless. We want to provide infrastructure and neighborhood improvements in the low-income areas that will improve the overall quality of life and enhance the aesthetic character of the areas. And lastly, enhance safety and sustainability, and support neighborhood-based organizations and groups to create community unity. This chart here gives you a snapshot, excuse me, of the CDBG grant funding over the last 10 years. You can see in '20 through '22, we had an increase in funding. Now it's slightly going down every year. And as we talked about earlier, I suspect that next year will be even lower than this year. We're averaging about 5% a year in decrease in funding. And it's not because the city's doing anything wrong for that decrease. It's because there's more cities becoming entitlement cities, so they have to spread the money out further, just like we have to do with our applicants. So I'm going to pause right here and allow us an opportunity to hear from our applicants, unless you have questions before we continue.
Member Nelson?
I have one question. Could we use the CDBG money for homeless shelter?
Yes and no.
Okay.
There are certain aspects of that strategy that we could use funding for. If an agency wanted to operate the shelter, we could fund the operational cost. We couldn't fund the construction aspect of it. There's certain elements that you could fund. It gets a little tricky, but yes, there are some portions that we could fund.
Could we use ship or home funds?
Yes, you could use either, depending on... Now, the ship program, we do a three-year plan.
Okay.
So currently in our plan, we don't have that strategy. So the next cycle, if that's something council wanted to consider with ship, we could look at that. Again, I don't suspect home to be around next year, but if it is, that is something that you could use home dollars for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel?
Yes, to tack on to that, that makes me think too of our cold-weather shelter. And right now, I think I only know of one nonprofit within our community that's doing that, and I don't think they're receiving any funds from us. Is that a potential that... And I say that because it's nice that they're doing that, but what happens if they decide not to? What happen, what do we do for our residents? And that does give me concern. So is that something that we could potentially explore? For them to potentially be able to partner with the city to receive funds for that homeless shelter, for things that they do for the homeless, and especially, I will say, as we're getting into the colder months?
Yeah, that's certainly something that we could look at. Again, that would fall under our 15% cap under public services. So we have to keep that in mind.
Okay.
But that is something, definitely, if that's a strategy we want to look at going forward, then we can absolutely put that in our RFP.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, can I just ask a follow-up? So you said that would be in the 15%, so that would be out of the $42,000?
No, the $42,000 represents the 15%.
Okay, so it would come out of that?
Forty-two thousand, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we're ready for the presentations.
Okay, we're going to invite our applicants up to give you a brief three-to-five-minute presentation on what they are seeking funding for. Our first applicant is Aging Matters in Brevard for our senior nutrition program.
City Clerk, can you set the timer to five minutes?
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? Aging Matters is proudly celebrating 60 years of serving the seniors of Brevard County. Our mission is simple and powerful, to support the independence, health, safety, and quality of life of every aging citizen in our community. Every program we operate is designed with one goal in mind, to help seniors to remain safely in their homes for as long as possible. Providing home care services of light housekeeping, respite, and personal care. Home safety, installing ramps, smoke alarms, and grab bars. Transportation services with senior train servants and vets driving vets. Pets on Wheels for pet food deliveries, so seniors don't go hungry trying to feed their pets using their meals they get from Meals on Wheels. Doing emergency feedings, providing food for five emergency shelters during hurricanes, with food provided from our community kitchen, because it's powered by our emergency generator. And Sunflower House, which is a caregiver support center in West Melbourne. Now, Meals on Wheels is more than just a meal. As of September 2025, Meals on Wheels program has delivered more than 128,900 meals to homebound seniors, thanks to over 650 dedicated volunteers. Two of those clients, Theo and Brenda, Theo lives in Titusville, receives daily meals during the recent flooding, his neighborhood was underwater. Two of our volunteers, Mark and Charlotte, refused to let that stop them. They actually went and purchased a low-cost vehicle capable of driving through their flooded streets to get to that person at Theo's home, so he wouldn't go without a meal. Then there was Brenda, another client who lost her home to a fire over the Thanksgiving weekend. And Mark and Charlotte stepped up again, finding clothing, supplies, and essentials, along with Aging Matters providing food, blankets, and support to help Brenda settle into another temporary housing facility. Each year, we save at least five seniors' lives through our daily well-being checks. Just two months ago, on a Friday, a volunteer reported that a client didn't answer the door. The volunteer called the client, no answer. Then the volunteer called our office. We called the emergency contact, no answer. Called the doctor, wasn't there. We checked the hospitals, nothing. And then we requested a police wellness check. With the help of the volunteer, our Aging Matters program director and neighbors found the building superintendent, and then entry was gained to that person's apartment. The client was found on the floor and able to move, a call for help. Again, that was on a Friday. Without the volunteer's persistence, she would remain there all weekend long. This is why we are more than just food. It's a safety check, it's human interaction, and it's life-saving care. Our volunteers combat isolation through consistent friendly visits, address food insecurity, ensuring seniors receive nutritious food they need. Across Brevard, we operate 13 senior lunch congre dining sites, located primarily in low-income neighborhoods. Right here in Titusville, St. James AM Church hosts one of those busiest sites with 25 to 30 clients that go there daily for a hot meal, play a little bingo, and have social activities. Our request for the coming year, '26-'27... Our request for the coming year, '26, '27, is that requesting $16,445. That funding will provide 2,860 meals to 11 unduplicated seniors in Titusville at $5.75 per meal, supplementing the Older Americans Act funding. Each senior receiving approximately 260 meals per year. Food costs continue to rise, along with the utilities and wages, and the need is growing. Across Brevard County, more than 300 seniors are on the Meals on Wheels waitlist. Thirty of those seniors are right here in Titusville. Last year, I shared a story of a client needing a secondary meal, it's called a PM meal. We still can't provide that secondary meal for those needing it most. But thanks to community support through Adopt a Senior program that took off a little bit this year, we're able to take 25 of the Level 5, our highest level of nutritional need, off of the waitlist in different areas of the community. So the community is responding, but we still have a long way to go. The Older Americans Act funding is projected to remain flat again this year, so flat funding means combining with rising costs is effectively a cut, which means the waitlist will continue to grow. In Titusville, known 18 Meals on Wheels routes are operated each week, 85 volunteers serve them from the Grove Church. 92% of seniors served meet HUD guidelines for very low or low income. The city of Titusville has long been a strong partner, from the Titusville Fire Department supporting safety programs, to the St. James' Church opening its doors for our senior lunch program. Mayor Connor coming out and helping us deliver meals, which is a long tradition of coming out to help meals. So we thank you for your leadership in helping us. In closing, we are more than just a meal, a safety check, a social connection, a network that feeds the needs of the neighbors, your friends, and your community. And thank you again for your continued support.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Okay, thanks.
Our next applicant was Brevard Alzheimer's. Unfortunately, we don't have a representative here tonight. They had a last-minute medical issue. They have requested $7,200 for the continuation of their non-emergency transportation program, which is currently funded by the city. Our next applicant is the Brevard Women's Center, and they're requesting $16,000 for this year.
Hey there, how are you? I think I've spoken to all of you again, or before, so, you know, I'm from the Women's Center, you know, we've been here 50 years in Brevard and 15 here in Titusville. You know, we are the rape crisis center for the county, and we have a safe house here in Titusville for victims of domestic violence. We can all support. Last year, we provided over 15,700 services to Titusville residents over the year. Those services included shelter in the safe house, advocacy, mental health counseling, assistance with injunctions for protection, and victim compensation claims. Like Terry said, we're requesting $16,000 for the year, and that will go to running the safe house again. The safe house, it's a renovated, regular residential house that's been divided into three-bedroom bathrooms with the office and a kitchen that like makes it able to, able to host whole families at one time. They can all stay together in their one bedroom, and that allows us to have male children be able to stay complete and solid, males up to 18, as long as they're still in school. It provides a place for women and children to get out of imminent danger and work on what their next steps are. If the safe house is full, or we were to have a male client, we have some partner hotels that they would go stay at and still receive the same advocacy services at our office over here on Julia Street. We follow up with our clients when they leave us, three, six, 12 months afterwards, and we're happy to say about 90% report that they're living violence-free, haven't returned to their abuser, which is what we want. What we use the money for is just general operations for running a house that usually would have about eight people living in it, so electricity, security, yard care, like little repair things that go wrong with the house that's in general, and a little bit of money for one of our safe house advocates that's on staff there 24/7. So far in 2025, we've had 24 families living in the house. That's 55 individuals, so 24 moms and some kids. Our program addresses all of the national objectives that CDBG is required to and meets the consolidated plan priorities that you guys have set out. And I'd like to tell you one little story about one of those 55 individuals and 24 families. When Ava, her name's Ava, called us, called our hotline, she was kind of out of hope. She and her two children, Bella and Caleb, were enduring escalating verbal, emotional, and physical abuse. The dad was threatening to throw them out and was withholding food. Ava was really scared, didn't know what to do, and was worried that leaving was going to cause a situation where she may lose custody of the kids. It's a fear that a lot of people have. And adding to the challenge, little boy Caleb had a neurological disorder that made him wheelchair-bound, non-verbal, and he required like a specialized bed. So that was another issue that she thought of in terms of leaving. But she called us, and advocates stepped in, came up with a safety plan that entailed not just safety with them leaving, but also they needed to coordinate moving his bed to the safe house. But that happened, they got there, and they began their journey, meeting immediate as well as long-term needs, which took a little bit because of, a lot because of the son Caleb, they had to find someplace to be able to help him. Ava hadn't been working, but we started working with her on career development, got her hooked up with SNAP and any other kind of public assistance that she was able to qualify for. Had some childcare through Early Learning Coalition. Continued to work on her safety as the husband was still harassing her, stalking, and all the things. She went and started going to our health, our mental health counseling individually and as well as support groups, which was really key in her regaining confidence. And she also started doing some parenting classes, because she did have to go to court and do some custody hearings. It's okay if I keep going just for a little bit. Anyway, end of the story. We were able to help her find a new apartment. We had some funding that helped with rental assistance, move-in costs. Things are growing good. They're... The little boy Caleb is in like a special school that he's been able to qualify for, and they're just doing great. And unfortunately, this scenario isn't unusual. Like, when I get ready to come to things like this or write other grant proposals, I go talk to our advocates, and I'm like, oh, what's some of your stories? And there are stories like this all the time, unfortunately. You would never, when I started this job, I would never have thought that things like this happened, but they do. But anyway, with the support of you and the community, you know, it's a generational life change, so we appreciate it, appreciate all the help over the years, and hope to continue. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next application we received was from grandparents raising grandchildren for the Child First program. I don't believe we have a representative from their agency tonight, but they're seeking $7,000 for their program. The next applicant we have is Matthews Hopes for their mobile homeless outreach program, which would be a new program for Titusville.
Good evening, Council. My name is Pastor Scott Ballou. I am the founder and CEO of Matthews Hope Ministries. We are originally based out of Orange County. We started there 16 years ago on my 401K, which means I will never retire. My hope is that if I become homeless again, that someone will say, hey, wasn't that that guy that helped homeless people? We should probably invite him in. That's my retirement program. Long story short, as we started back there, our budget in 2010 was $75,000. Our budget this year is $15 million. So to say we've grown would be an understatement. It was never my intent, quite honestly, to even come into Brevard, but I came over here to slow down, and that didn't happen. We opened a campus in Cocoa, which is about six acres, 38,000 square feet of building that we currently help with medical, mental health care. We have a Montessori preschool. We have transitional housing. We have laundry service, showers. We have a hair salon and nail techs. We have pretty much just anything you can think of in one location. Typically, someone would have to go to several different places to get those things. What we have found is that as we started to get bigger and grow in the area, we were starting to get support from individuals in the Titusville market and asked to come here. So we looked to see what was here. We looked at LifePoint, we looked at Under the Bridge and different things like that to see what they were offering, because we didn't want to step on anybody's toes at all, and we found that that just wasn't going to be the case. In fact, we've been able to partner with them in some. Just recently, we gave a lot of food to Under the Bridge, because they cook a meal once a week, and we have things that don't make sense for my pantry, so we're helping with that. But our plan right now is, you may have heard about our sleeper buses, that's a whole nother thing that will be coming into your community and throughout Brevard, but this specific grant was for our mobile outreach team. Right now, we're coming into Titusville four times a week. Twice, we come in with our buses, and we take people back to Cocoa to get all those services we're talking about, and we're going to return them. We're not an Uber service. If we pick them up in Titusville, wherever we pick them up, we're going to drop them back off in Titusville. But the second service that we have is mobile teams that go out early in the morning. It's not even daylight yet when they leave Cocoa, and they come in the community for those that will not, could not, or should not come into the campus. That can be someone, we do a background check on every single person that comes to our campus, that could be someone who's a sexual predator. If we identify them as such, we will still serve them in the community, they just cannot come on to our location. Often, we find it's like a soldier that has PTSD, and we've got to build a relationship with them first in the community before they're ever going to get on my bus and come get the other services. Other times, maybe a mental health issue where being around, when we're serving right now, give you an example, last Tuesday, we served 167, and on Thursday, we did 155. Okay? Being around that many people when you have very high anxiety could be a real tough thing for someone with mental health issues. So we're going to go ahead and often start the relationship out here in the field with our teams. Those teams are coming into Titusville already twice a week. Okay, so you've got our buses coming twice a week and that. And when we come in here, we bring food, clothing, hygiene, and on occasion, we'll bring our medical team as well, especially if we realize there's an outbreak or something, or like during the pandemic, we made sure that anybody who wanted a vaccine was able to get it. We went through something like 600,000 masks, and in our area of Orange County, we had not one single outbreak of COVID in our area of Orange County till two and a half, two and a half years into it. And that was because every day, each day we went out there, we took masks with us, we gave them hand sanitizers, we were in full gowns, because at that time, we had no idea what that was going to look like, and that's the same thing we're doing now. We recently just did vaccines for flu shots, we did Hepsi, we did, we did shingles, some other things that we did, because what's happening is our population is changing dramatically, and here's what you need to get ready for. I'm a baby boomer. I'm 63 years old. My mother is a baby boomer. She's 18 years and three months older than me. When her husband passed away recently, her income dropped by three-quarters. Because of his military service, for length of service, what she did come out is with great insurance, but if my mom did not have that military insurance with the income that she's left with, she herself would be homeless once again, which is what my first experience was homelessness with my family back when I was a kid. So that was the last thing I want to see. Right now, we're seeing 35% of the first-time homeless people walking in. Here, I said 35%, first-time homeless. They have never, they owned a home, they had whatever, that's who's walking in that are baby boomers right now, 35% of them. So we're seeing things that are happening because of housing situations, young families. It's not that they can't afford the apartments, what they can't do is qualify now that you have to have three times your rent as salary. Typical rent in Brevard County is about $2,000 right now for a one-bedroom. That's a $72,000 income. The third one is people with physical and mental disabilities, and I'm not even getting into mental illness yet, I'm talking about those that have simply outlived their caregivers. Those folks were dying in their 30s just 30 years ago, now they're living to be 50, 60, 70 years old. So we're serving all those people, we're taking them from your community, taking them for services, coming out to those that can't come in for whatever reason, and that's what we'll be using the money for, is for our advocates, and we hope to connect them. You've also got, you don't have a drug and alcohol problem here, some people are going to argue that, you have a mental health problem here, that if we could take care of that mental health, you would watch a lot of your drug and alcohol issues go away, and I will stake my life on that as a, I guess I still am an addict, but I've been clean since I was 28, I'm 63 now. I've seen it done there, been there, and what I can tell you is, you've got it here, and our goal is going to be coming here to your community and make sure that if it can't be taken care of here, we'll take them there, but you're going to get them back. Any questions?
Thank you, Scott. We really appreciate you coming in.
Appreciate it, thanks so much.
How much are they requesting?
$30,000.
How much?
$30,000.
$30,000?
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Can I, before we move on, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
One question. So the $30,000, is that for the bus coming up here?
It's for the mobile outreach team.
It's for the mobile outreach part of it. So what will happen is twice a week, that mobile outreach team, it will help us cover the employees and all the food, clothing, hygiene, and other services they're going to get. But the side service is the fact that our goal is going to get them on that bus, so they get everything else, so we can give them help with mental health and all that kind of stuff. That is not something that's built into that cost, but that is a service that they will be receiving through that.
Okay, thanks.
My pleasure.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes. So our last applicant is North Brevard Charity Sharing Center for their new power program. They're requesting $42,000.
Good evening. And we did request 42, but I think we moved that down to 26, is that we still on record? Because we'll take the 42 if we can get it. Good evening, I'm Anifa Watson, the Executive Director of North Brevard Charities. The program we've outlined is designed to meet urgent and persistent needs, particularly among low-income families and individuals striving to overcome barriers to employment, financial stability, and housing security. With a focus on practical skill-building, personalized support, and community partnerships, we believe this initiative aligns closely with the values and the goals of the CDBG program. Based in Titusville, North Brevard Charities is dedicated to improving the lives of individuals in North Brevard County by providing emergency assistance for food, housing, medical care, and other essential needs. Our organization focuses on long-term stability by offering affordable housing and programs to help individuals achieve self-sufficiency. Our mission is grounded in compassion, targeting those who may not qualify for assistance elsewhere as we strive for a community free from poverty and homelessness. NBC provides a wide range of services to support individuals and families, including emergency assistance with rent, utilities, medical and dental expenses, a food pantry, and shelter support. Additionally, we offer job training, case management, affordable housing, school supplies, and access to our thrift store for fundamental needs. We serve a diverse clientele focusing on low-income families and unhoused elderly individuals and others facing hardship in North Brevard. To date, we have assisted over 5,000 families who have struggled with unstable housing and inadequate meal access. The North Brevard Charities Power Self-Sufficiency Program aligns with the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, national objective of benefiting low- and moderate-income individuals. It does this by promoting housing affordability, employment readiness, and long-term self-sufficiency. Furthermore, the NBC Power Program supports the city of Titusville's Consolidated Plan by offering economic opportunities for low-income families, which includes providing access to affordable housing and essential public services. North Brevard Charities determined that its NBC Power Program aligns directly with the identified strategy of promoting economic opportunity and reducing poverty by conducting a thorough assessment of local needs and service gaps. Drawing on recent U.S. Census data and Feeding America's Food and Security Reports, the agency identified that nearly 5,000 children in... agency identified that nearly 5,000 children in North Brevard live below the federal poverty line. This is a clear indicator of systemic economic hardship in the region. Through outgoing client intake evaluations, community feedback, and collaboration with local housing authorities, we recognize that families in crisis often lack access to sustained supportable services that foster long-term stability. The NBC Power Program was designed to address these gaps by offering financial literacy training, employment readiness workshops, and housing stabilization assistance. These interventions not only align with the consolidated plan's goals, but also empower families to move beyond emergency relief toward lasting self-sufficiency, ultimately strengthening the broader community. And North Brevard Charities' proposed program, NBC Power, which stands for Pathways to Opportunity, Wellness, Empowerment, and Resilience, is a holistic public service initiative designed to support low- to moderate-income families in North Brevard as they work towards long-term self-sufficiency. The program provides a coordinated set of services, including financial literacy education, employment readiness training, housing stabilization support, nutritional wellness education, and personalized case management. These services are structured to address the underlying causes of poverty and promote economic mobility, wellness, and resilience among vulnerable households. The scope of the program includes financial literacy workshops, which will include budgeting, credit repair, and savings strategies; employment readiness training, which includes resume building, interview preparation, job placement support; housing stabilization assistance; eviction prevention, affordable housing navigation; nutritional wellness education, budget-friendly meal planning and cooking demonstrations; access to food pantries; and personalized case management and goal planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monifa. Ms. Franklin, is that the last presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The last presentation.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you so much for all you guys coming in tonight. As I look around the room, I think I've either raised money or volunteered for all of your organizations. And we really appreciate the work that you guys do in our community. It does not go unnoticed. With that being said, obviously, you see the state that our CDBG funds are in, and that makes it tough across the board. One thing I would like to request of staff, as you go back and do data collection and compile the rankings and present back to us, I would like to see if we could get ahold of the asset mapping that Parish Healthcare is doing in terms of needs and what assets we have in the community. I don't know where that project is currently, but I know they are working on it. And I was hoping that there could be some data shared with us as to what pieces we have on the board and where, and so we can, you know, make the best educated decision as a council. Vice Mayor Cole.
I'm very familiar with five of the six of these organizations, which I know are very deserving organizations. The one I'm not familiar with is the grandparents raising grandchildren. Obviously, the total requested is $118,000 and the amount we have is 42, which seems like it's about 35%, 36%. I wish we had enough to do it all. I'm on the Parish Foundation Board, and I wish there was a way we could supplement this because I'm sure that every request is a worthy request. And just for discussion purposes, if we only have 35%, 36% of the funds that are requested for discussion purposes only, I would say that we take that 36% and put it against the amount requested and go from there. Just for discussion.
Yeah, but it's kind of hard for me to judge. We had lights that were already on, so does anybody want to chime in on what Vice Mayor Cole said?
You mean like, kind of like a match for the city?
No. What I meant was, we only have 35% to 36% of the funds. So if you took 36% of each one of the requests, and that would be the amount that they would get, so that everyone would be able to have, would get something from this. That was for discussion.
Sure.
I would agree.
Can we bring back up the presentation?
Oh, councils having a quick discussion.
I have a slide to help you just bring up a breakdown for you.
Is it the one after that?
It's the $42,000.
$42,000.
$42,000.
Yeah.
The next one shows the breakdown for each one.
Yeah.
So that's the second one. We wanted to see that one.
Can I say, Herman, I like your idea, but I think it's premature. I think we need to let Terry and her staff do their work. I agree that, I know, like you, all except for one of the organizations, and I would say they're all deserving, but I think we need to let Terry do her work and then go from there.
No, I agree. Like I said, when I made that, that was for discussion purposes among us to see what our feelings were on it.
And I think that's why I brought up the asset mapping, to see what data we could have available to us to help us make this decision.
I could check on that.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I think I asked staff to do it.
Okay.
Member Muskosa.
My mom always said, if you don't ask, you will never know. So is it possible that we use CBDG grant money for this, the $42,000? But we spend so much money, and this is for our city manager, on studies. Like, it's insane to me. Is it possible for the city to chip in additionally for that? I know, I think these are all just like such worthy causes, and I'm happy that we spend money on other things, but I feel like this is like so important and they're doing such a service for our community. Is it possible? And I was just looking at numbers, so I'm just going to throw out some stuff. So it's not too crazy, but let's say hypothetically, all the organizations that are here, 25,000, and the two that aren't here, they were only requesting 7,000, like 10,000. That would be 125,000, take away the 42. I know that's getting into the weeds, but you kind of get the idea of the city could supplement a little bit more. And I know it's not budgeted, so I just think it's something that's a worthy cause. If there is additional money or something we could cut back on, I think it would be important. So that's just open for discussion or thoughts. I don't even know if it's possible, but I want to put it out there.
Member Stokel?
Yes. I want to go back to the asset mapping because that's the first time I've heard of that. And I, that's funny, you mentioned that. As I was hearing the presentations, I started writing down like, what population of our community are we helping? And I heard elderly population, abused victims population, our homeless population, those that struggle with mental health, those that we can try to help become self-sufficient. And so I think that if we do some type of asset mapping to see what other organizations, so if we couldn't fund one organization, are there other organizations that they could partner with? And then I know Matthews Hope, they mentioned LifePoint. So how can we kind of like piece together some of these nonprofits so that we're not duplicating efforts? And really, as a council grouping in and seeing, okay, what populations of our community do we want to help? How are we helping them? And really kind of be strategic about it. I wish we could fund them all to Member Muskosa's point. I will just caution and be careful as we are using public funds and taxpayer dollars. We have to just make sure, especially as the state is looking at us. And I think as cuts are going to be happening, long-term sustainability, I feel like we really need to bring together the nonprofits and maybe come up with some type of way that we can keep them meeting together, collaborating together, and doing what we can with the grants. And hopefully, they, you know, the funding still keeps coming. But I just get real concerned, especially when we're talking about what's going to happen with property taxes next year and our funding, like our core services, how does that look? So I know we're not making the decision today, but I think that's some of the things that we kind of need to brainstorm and maybe us individually start thinking about other nonprofits that we know of and how can we kind of help guide that discussion.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Yes, as a city, we do police fire water roads, and we still need to keep working every day to get better at that and still work on our stormwater master plan from 1966, fix ditches. I mean, there's a lot of things that need to go on. Also, you know, Scott will be the first one to tell you, we get together on a regular basis. I've brought together a lot of the groups that work with unhoused populations. We can coordinate, collaborate, work together. Even Ms. Monifa is a part of it. It was really great because we had somebody come in there and says, I have a problem that's not going to be solved at this table. Within 30 seconds, we had that problem solved by working together. So it was, it's really cool to kind of see that. And again, it takes a community to help a community, and government should focus on its core services to its point. Member Nelson?
And I just want to say, I would like to give money to everybody, but after the floods, I think we need to be very careful about where we're spending money and taking money from, say, Public Works and using it for this, or taking money from here and using it for this. I talked to my cousin today whose house had two feet of water. And so I'm like, we need to resolve those issues too. So.
Member Muskosa?
Yeah, I mean, I do agree, we have to provide essential services, but the people are the essential, like, they're the essential, this is why we are here, is because of people. And that's who we're providing it to. I just don't want to lose sight of that, and I know it's, yeah, it's just hard. I think, just to be honest, like, I hate that people's homes have been flooded, but they're homes that are flooded. Some people don't have these homes. And so, I don't know. I just hope that we're as careful as when we're asking for requests for feasibility studies and all of those things. Those are very important, but we can also compare that to some of these requests as well. And this isn't always top of mind because this is only coming to us once a year, whereas people come up and talk about flooding and things like that constantly. A lot of these topics, we don't hear unless an organization comes in. So, you know, perhaps we can, I can do a better job of trying to think about it as we're approving other things.
Thank you very much. Ms. Franklin?
Yeah, I just wanted to share with you, we'll have more details when we get into the next phase during our funding recommendations that we'll bring back to you. But when we're looking at funding through the RFP process, we request their budget breakdown for these programs. And most of the programs and the applicants also get funding from Brevard County, Cocoa, so they are getting matching funds from other areas, just like AG Matters talked about, the, you know, the other grants that they get. So we're not fully funding their programs. We're just supplementing their programs. But yes, it is challenging when you, the city gets such a small portion for public services. We have started some conversations with our applicants just because of the amount that was requested, so we have already started those conversations. And we do it every year. Unfortunately, we have to do that. And, you know, we want the programs to still be viable, so we don't want to, you know, just give them a little bit and it doesn't really help the program. The RFP process, the minimum request that we feel as staff that we would have to still manage is $5,000 to make it, you know, feasible for the city to manage those. Additionally, I just wanted to add, since we're talking about possibly city funding, anytime the city puts in its budget to fund public services, although it sounds like a good thing, it becomes a challenge for the applicants because now they have to produce more that next year to get CDBG funding. They have to serve more people. They have to have a quantifiable increase in their program, which has been very challenging for some of them with the money. So just, we have to consider that too as well. I don't think, I just wanted, was there any other questions before I go?
Seeing none.
Okay. So for year five, the final year of the action plan, just for this five-year plan, again, just to reiterate the focus for this coming year with the community, the discussions we've had with them, these are the topics they would like to focus on for the monies outside of public services. You may have heard about executive orders, and they are impacting the CDBG program. A lot of these orders have taken some things out of public services that we can no longer fund. So I just wanted to list those so that everyone was aware of those as we move forward through the program. And that's the end of our presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Franklin. City manager, city attorney?
As Terry mentioned, that will be coming back in January with some further recommendations after Terry negotiates with the various agencies and then up to council to make the final allocations. Moving on to the next item, 4B, and that is to adopt the Annual State Housing Initiative Partnership, the SHIP program, Housing Incentive Plan for 2026.
City clerk, are there any cards?
There's no cards.
Thank you very much. Council, any discussion? Seeing none, will somebody make a motion?
Sorry, I do have one question. I'm sorry. I noticed that it talked about inclusionary housing, and then we just got, we received some information that our, the grant that we were looking for, for the feasibility study for affordable housing, didn't go through. Could we still look at affordable, I mean, inclusionary zoning without having that study? Because I felt like that study was, we were able to do more because we were getting that study, if I remember correctly. So what are we limited to now because we're not paying for that study?
Our AHOC has been asking for that study for years now. We haven't had one, Terry, in how long?
Ever.
Yeah, the last affordable housing study was 15 years, 15 years ago.
When all the housing was affordable?
So they want to base, we're wanting to base a lot of affordable housing policies on a new study that would show us where Titusville's at and what Titusville needs. And we did get denied for it.
Yeah, that grant was, the state denied our grant. Our understanding is that they believe that it would create a burden and additional regulation inconsistent with Senate Bill 180.
Can we still move forward as a council to discuss inclusionary zoning?
Of course, yeah. That could be a...
Without having the study?
You could, yeah. The inclusionary study, I'm sorry, the inclusionary zoning language in the statute is an enabling language that allows communities to adopt if they want to. The study was just something we thought would be helpful to help justify, or they exceed, kind of explored the feasibility of adopting something like that. The other part of it, too, was the linkage fee. That's also in the statute, allowing communities to adopt that if they wanted to. But there's a requirement for an affordable housing study in order to justify it. That's very specific in the statute.
Thank you.
All right. So tonight, we're just going to present to you our Housing Incentive Plan. The purpose of the Affordable Housing Incentive Committee is to review the city's policies, procedures, ordinances, and development regulations and the comprehensive plan as it relates to affordable housing. To develop an incentive plan recommending incentives for the SHIP grant program, the plan incorporates specific incentives and actions to encourage or facilitate the development of affordable housing while protecting the ability of the property to appreciate. As required by Florida statute, a housing incentive plan must be adopted by the city and submitted to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation annually when local SHIP funding exceeds $350,000. And we received $352,000 this past year. annually when local SHIP funding exceeds $350,000. And we received $352,000 this past year. No later than December 30th each year, or the city's SHIP grant funding may be subject to termination. At a minimum, the AHOC is required to make recommendations on the following incentives, A through K, with A, I, and J being mandatory. In addition to the required incentives, the AHOC has the option to include additional incentives that they believe would further the availability of affordable housing. As a result, the AHOC has included the implementation of the inclusionary zoning. The AHOC met July through November of this year to develop the 2026 incentive plan. The AHOC reviewed the city's previously adopted plan along with the current codes and regulations to develop the 2026, 2026 housing incentive plan as required under the SHIP grant program. The consensus of the AHOC was that the city's current codes and regulations were adequate, and all previous incentives have been implemented and are working successfully, except for the additional recommendation of incentive L, the inclusionary zoning. However, there is still room for improvement when it comes to the availability of affordable housing in Titusville. For 2026, the AHOC recommended the following incentives. A, expedited permitting, which is mandatory, and it provides a 25% reduction in review time, which has been, they've been doing for years with the city. B, ongoing review process recommends retaining the existing incentive, requiring a member of the planning agency to serve on the AHOC by way of a principal planner. D, reservation of infrastructure capacity. The AHOC recommends incentivizing the set aside of affordable housing units for developments that utilize public infrastructure. E, accessory dwelling units recommends increasing public awareness of the ADU ordinance through outreach and education to teach people that we have that, and encourage people to use it. J, printed inventory of public land suitable for affordable housing, which is attached to your packet. And L, the inclusionary zoning recommending reconsideration of the recommended incentive to create inclusionary zoning as a planning tool to create affordable housing units within housing developments. On October 20th, 2025, the AHOC approved the 2026 housing incentive plan as submitted. A subsequent, subsequent public hearing was held on November 3rd to receive public comments on the proposed plan, and no comments were received during the public hearing. The Neighborhood Services Department is requesting council's approval of the prepared plan and authorization to incorporate the approved incentives into the city's local housing assistance plan, known as our LHAP, for the SHIP grant program. And a reminder that an adoption of resolution number 20-2025 is involved. Staff and chairperson Kayla Manning is available if you have any questions.
Seeing none. Member Stokel? Nevermind.
I don't know if it's a question for Kayla necessarily, it could be Brad. I think, my question goes back to, I know that the grant was denied, but one of my things that I was hoping with this grant is we could know where we are at with our affordable housing. Like, I know, I feel like it's a buzzword that we're saying all across Florida. Everybody knows it's expensive to buy a home right now. And it's hard for, at least me, to feel like I'm making good decisions if I don't even know what our inventory is like right now, how we compare to the rest of the county, how we compare to surrounding areas. Are we doing good on affordable housing? Do we need to ramp, like, I don't know. And I feel like that study was going to help me. And now I'm not sure what to do.
City, counsel, you can do an affordable housing study, it just has to be funded in some way. You have to get, I think that was the issue, since the last past 15 years, we've relied on some old data, and we have not hired a consultant to do that or update it for us. We introduced to you last year the idea of doing affordable housing study, mainly because it was a requirement in order to identify the feasibility of adopting a linkage fee. But you don't have to look at those two options in the statute. You can do an affordable housing study on your own. Just, the question is how it's going to be funded.
Okay. And then I guess my second thing, that's just not necessarily a question, but more of discussion, is part of why I want to know that is, as you know, sometimes we will get applications coming before us. And then I feel like we're having to debate whether or not do we potentially create flooding and encroach into our wetland area, but we have affordable housing and now it's, you know, multifamily apartment, or it's, I don't know. It makes it difficult. And I think just having more information to know where we're at, what does our city look like overall when we look at a map of our city, how to balance those things. It just makes it difficult for me personally to make a decision when we have all this coming toward us. So that's just, I just wanted to share that with you guys.
Mr. Parrish, how much was that grant for that we got denied?
$75,000.
So that's all it's going to cost us to do the study?
Well, that was the request for the grant. It could be less, depending on what we ask for in our study. Terry, want to add to that?
I just wanted to offer that we will be entering into our next cycle of preparing our five-year plan for a CDBG program. We start a year in advance. As part of that process, we could do an affordable housing study with that process. We wouldn't utilize our admin funds for that. It may or may not cover all of that. We could present to you options with some other unencumbered funds that we have gotten back on repayments of loans and things that could go towards that, if that's something council would like for us to do.
Ms. Franklin, if we went that route, how long would it take before that study would commence?
We begin the process in, I want to say, December of next year for the five-year plan. But we could do the study sooner, if that's-
Oh, yes, it's, you know, because you're in the last year of your five-year plan, so you're developing next year's plan, or the next five years after this. So, you know, let's say it was incorporated plan, you're looking at two years before you even did the study. And then who knows how long the study's going to take. And to Member Stokel's point, that's three years of us not having maybe the correct information. So, if-
Yeah, for now, what we do when we don't have the access to a current affordability study is we use data from HUD system. They do have a lot of data, but it's more county-wide data instead of localized data. So we prefer to use localized data.
City manager, I know you're going to jump in here in a second, but, you know, maybe that's something if council would like, and we can chime in here if they want to let us know what the cost is and talk to us about it and add it to agenda item. And we can have further discussion on the matter. So we can make an informed decision of whether that's something we want to fund at mid-year or bake it into next year's budget. So it will come a little, maybe a little sooner. City manager, did you want to chime in?
Normally during the audit, we get an idea of what we have as far as unencumbered funds, and we report back to council. And during the mid-year, in April, we request additional projects which may or may not have been funded or underfunded. And I think we could come back at mid-year with a affordable housing study using funds that we harvest from our audit. And I think, you know, there's a very good chance that we'll have sufficient funds to do that. And we can get that started this fiscal year instead of waiting for the plan to be updated.
I appreciate that, city manager. And I think, you know, my goal is just to know exactly what it's going to cost so that we can kind of, you know, collectively, you know, weigh it versus our other priorities. Member Moscoso?
Is it possible to do a study in-house? Or does it have to be, I know it wouldn't be as extreme, but, and we could use the HUD data for the county. But, I mean, we know our community the best. And so is there a way we can get at least some information about our local area without having, at least sooner rather than waiting a year or two years for this study?
We can certainly look at it, but I'm not going to commit until I just, you know, take a look at the scope of work and-
Yeah, I don't even know what it entails. And so it could be a lot more than what I think. But I'm just curious if that's even an option to do some of that in-house.
We will certainly look at it and come back to you.
Member Stokel?
Yeah. And just to clarify, the reason why I think it would be good to look at, and the only data I'm really looking at is our home values compared to the rest of the county have historically been low. And so when you go through the budget process and you see why our millage rate might be higher than, you know, West Melbourne or some of the other areas, it's you have to look at their home value. So when I hear, I just want to make sure we're balancing appropriately, because when we add in more affordable housing and/or home values that are lower, we will have to raise our millage rate more to account for, because we're still having to pay the same amount of roads for another area where their home values, that people are paying more in taxes, if it, if we continue down that road. So that's where I'm like, I don't want us to go and say, because everybody's saying we need to do affordable housing, I want to know how do we compare to other areas as well, to get a better idea. Otherwise, I feel like if I don't know that, we could get ourselves in a situation where we will have to be, you know, raising our millage rate to account for roads and the services that we're having to provide. So I think that data will help me. But to your point, that's the only thing I'm looking at is how, what are our home values? But that's not necessarily affordable housing, but how do we compare?
Vice Mayor Cole?
You know, I was just sitting up there thinking for a minute. And if, at mid-year, which would be April, is it possible that we could have an RFP ready to go at that point in time? So if the money's available, we can immediately go out on the street and do it. And that would facilitate us not waiting, because I agree with everything everybody has said, that we do need that study. We can't make, we can't make a good decision without having that study and knowing really where we fall as far as the county and the state is concerned. So if that is possible, I think that would be a way to do it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Nelson?
And I'd certainly like to know what our stock is. How much are we missing? Because Scott's right. I mean, remember, a couple of years ago, we had a whole group of elderly people coming in, and their rent was going up by like $50. And they were panicking because they were like, we're going to be homeless. And I don't, I don't know about you guys, but periodically I see old people.
Why are you looking at me?
They'll look at me, too. But I see, you know, our elderly population on the street. And I'm like, this is wrong. This is wrong. So, you know, I'm hoping it will tell us what we need in Titusville.
Thank you, Member Nelson. You guys have anything else? Alrighty. City clerk, you said there was no card, so I'm trusting that you said that, if I remember correctly.
There's still no cards.
Member Nelson?
Move to adopt the annual SHIP program housing incentive plan.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion?
Does that include the resolution number 20-2025?
Yes.
Okay.
Friendly amendment and second is accepted.
Yes.
We all know what we're voting on. City clerk, please.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. City manager?
That concludes the two items of business. Next is petitions and requests.
Thank you very much. Anybody for petitions or requests from the public, present, non, or, it's not non-agenda items, it's just petitions or requests about this meeting? I had to double-check myself.
Not to prolong the meeting, but this shuffalo here on Tropic Street. I've been following this process for a long time, as evidenced by my notes, which I'm going to share with you tonight. I just want to say, on behalf of the concerned citizens, Ms. Franklin and her staff, these ladies have been working very hard and very diligently and very bravely with concerned citizens at many meetings, long, involved, in-depth. And many, many times, Ms. Franklin has explained to us over and over again why HUD and the CDBG money is so difficult to deal with. Why did we get to spend $331,000 last year repaving Tropic Street and Canaveral Street when we have homeless people on the streets, sleeping on somebody's rented screen porch when it was 32 degrees in the wintertime? I know that one of the objectives is to prevent moderately declining neighborhoods from further deterioration and to provide safe and efficient housing within financial reach. And yet, I see Denise walking down the streets from the pantries, and she'll bring a loaf of bread and ask, can I give her a dollar and a shot? She prefers gin, but I drink rum, so she settles for that. For years and years, this is the fifth year now we're going into this project for this particular neighborhood. And I just wonder why Denise has not been able to get into a homeless shelter or to get to go to Cocoa for showers. I think the money is misappropriated and spent entirely wrong in the CDBG program. That has nothing to do with us and with Ms. Franklin. It's the federal laws. And I know we can't do anything about it. I'm just here to vent because I can't complain about the Neighborhood Services for the concerned citizens and our concerns. We're concerned about street lighting on particular streets, pedestrian lighting, not traffic lighting. We're concerned about sidewalks on First and Second Avenue on both sides of the street. And she has facilitated us in getting to those decisions and seeing how we can arrange the money. They've done an admirable job. My problem is with the Fed Gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shuffalo. Anybody else? Petitions or requests about this meeting? Seeing none. Member Nelson?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourned.